Welcome everybody, it's beautiful day here in Norfolk, I'm sure it's a beautiful day everywhere else in UK as we heat up for the super hot weekend. Hey, so we've got you for 60 minutes. So Leon's gonna kick off, he's gonna give a 20, 25 minute overview of the vision benefits and deployment options for electric vehicle charging points. And then Jeremy is gonna give a overview of the kind of the regulatory and financial implications. Just to introduce those two speakers, a little bit of background. So where's my, oh yeah, my notes, I've forgotten the notes, where are they, they're over here, good, good. Yeah, yeah, so I've known Leon a bit of time, he's involved in the startup industry, well, startup, yeah, kind of community, let's say here in Norwich. He's a serial entrepreneur, he started life 15 years in the Royal Air Force. And then he went on and started co-founding various businesses, the one I'm most familiar is, is Zero Taxis here in Norwich, which I think maybe is the UK's first zero emissions taxi service that he deployed, he sold that. And he's done a few other things and now he is a principal sustainability consultant, recently started at Net Zero Evolution and their consultancy specialising in helping organisations reach their net zero by 2050 targets. And then Jeremy, who's gonna be talking afterwards, so you've got Leon for 20 minutes, Jeremy for 10, 10 minutes or so. And Jeremy actually started his career as an area manager in building societies. And he's gone into local government, SILCA qualified, he's been both a clerk for many years and a mayor for local councils here in Norfolk, so both Leon and Jeremy are Norfolk boys. We're all in Norfolk as well. And now Jeremy is the county officer at Norfolk ALC. So let's see those polls, results, oh, we've got no X, I'll launch and I'll end the poll and share the results with you. Share those. Was that expected? Did you guys expect those results there? So we have no experts, which is actually probably a good thing for Leon, so you're perhaps not gonna get any really hard technical questions there. So intermediate, but most of the people have low knowledge, as I do, so I'm looking forward to learning today. And then we have people that are, yeah, believers, they believe, I would say that they believe in, this is the way forward in terms of transitioning our way we move vehicles around to electric, or maybe even hydrogen comes up. Cool, so I'm gonna hand over to you Leon, I'll stop sharing that. I'm, we had a bit of fun trying to get the slides going, so now I'm running the slides. So you will hear Leon and Jeremy telling me to change slides, but I'll just get that set up for you. Do, do, do. I'll probably get it all wrong now. And I'll go there. So Leon, over to you sir.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Leon, I'm a Welshman living in Norwich. And as John said, I've had several companies in the last 10 years to do with renewables, offshore wind, solar and EVs. So yeah, what I'm gonna talk about today is different ways you and your villages and towns can put EV infrastructure in. Next slide please, John. So basically, the government have said by 2025, we need a hell of a lot of chargers in England. So London, like most places, leads the, leads the way. But we're, we're well behind the curve and we've only got 494 in the home counties. So to grow, we need to put in a lot in the next several years. Next slide please, John. So these are some quotes and the top one is from councillor Sam Corican. He's the climate change spokesperson for all the county councils. And it basically states there, as we move forward towards a net zero future, most households should be able to charge their car up at home. But many people will not have this option at all, so we need to be putting in as many charge points as we can for, for our tourists. And again, Norfolk is a massive county, so public transport isn't very good at times. So we need to incentivise people by putting the infrastructure in. And next slide please, John. And again, this just goes on to, you know, they're ready and they have some money ready for this. Next slide. So this year is what you call grid serve electric forecourt. The very first one is put in in Braintree in Essex. And the second one has been live in Norwich, in Pozik, for the last six weeks. And this is what, there's gonna be 100 of these deployed in the UK the next three years. These can charge up to 32 cars at once, they have really nice facilities like meeting rooms, your supermarket, Costa. Yeah, so you will see these dotted around the UK. Our next slide. So these are the best in class and like I said, we're lucky in Norfolk to have one of these. And they can put anything up to 100 miles in 10 minutes of your car, that's a relatively cheap cost. Our next slide. So roughly, if you look in the middle year, the pricing, it has very pricing for how quick you want it. So if you look at the what you call AC charging, that just trickles in nice and steady, it's 39p per kilowatt. And then you're very, very fast when your high power goes in at 50p. So when it comes to the difference in petrol or diesel, this is a third of the price of petrol and diesel, so it's very, very cost effective. And the main thing is, is emitting no emissions, because this forecourt is from 100% renewables, the trunk line from a wind farm and solar, so it's really, really sustainable. Next, our next slide please. Okay. But going now from that big service station you've seen, these are the other options you can have. So the top one says home charging, straight and simple, from 240 volts, three pin, you could charge your car in about 11, 12 hours. And you'll get 200 mile range. Or you can have a fast charger, which is seven kilowatt. And again, this be the same cost, this will put your electricity in your car in about five, six hours. There's grants for these. And again, at the bottom, there are loads of these, there's about 35 separate companies around Norfolk and the east of England now, deploying 50 kilowatt and 350 kilowatt ultrafast chargers. And it's just getting more and more. Next slide please. So on the left, you can see one of the taxis called ABC Zero, they're what you call a rapid charger, 50 kilowatts, that'll put in 150, 200 miles in about 30 minutes. And on the right is a seven kilowatt charger that puts in, again, 200 mile range in five, six hours. Next slide. And this is the exciting thing, what's happening, they are pop-up chargers and chargers of lampposts. So you're, on your left, you pop up chargers, these are live and deployed in Dundee, Edinburgh and Plymouth. And they literally, you go to the car, you go into the app, the charger pops up and you charge it. But what I really like on the right are lampposts. And if you're ready for this, there's five and a half thousand of these in London and Brighton. And the infrastructure's already there, it's so simple, you just tie off, off the, off the lamppost and you can charge your car overnight when you need it. And next slide. So the company that's running this is called Ubertricity and they got bought out by a big company called Shell back last year. Next slide. So what is really, really good about these guys? It's really convenient, the infrastructure's there. And for funding, it is no cost to the parish council or council. Ubertricity with Shell will fund the entire thing. So it's quite incredible. Next slide. So as you see here, some stats for you, 5,300 already installed charge points. They've got lampposts and little satellite bollards, which I'll go into. That they just growing and growing. Next slide please. So if you look at the bottom part of this slide, this is the key thing, that they could, you can do your car overnight, you can charge your car overnight. You won't need to go to another charger at all. Our next slide please. Okay. So the three benefits of lamppost charge points, highly scalable, the one hour to install, that's it. There's no street clutter, there's no packing up pavements, overhead power lines. As I said, they're cost efficient, there's no need for any extra requirements. And the main benefit is convenient for your residents. Every small streets in Norfolk, apart from a couple, will have, you know, street lighting. And in the next slide, you see something quite smart as well. So if the lamppost isn't positioned perfect for the car, they will put in again, no cost, a bollard. And the bollard will just be a mini lamppost and you can charge your car from there. But as you can see in the slide, it's quite smart, it's, you know, doesn't look too out of, too out of sorts really. So next slide. And again, fire technology, as pay as you go with an app. And all these lampposts will have 4G enabled as well, so we'll always have internet. So you haven't got to worry about that. Next slide. So here's a case study in the city of Westminster, that they've done many. But again, if you look on the left, some really, really cool and very accurate stats. We're just within two weeks, they put chargers in the entire street, 24 charge points. Provided a huge amount of electricity and that then doesn't really put any disgruntledness on the, on the grid. So yeah, as you can see, I'm a big fan and I think it'd work. This is, you know, there's, there's the pop-up ones, but that takes a lot of, a lot of infrastructure, these ones are already there. And if you look on the right hand side, you'll see all the councils that have signed up and that're doing it, so many, many London companies, sorry, London councils and boroughs. Our next slide please, John. Okay, so things are moving thick and fast. So on the left, we have what you call swap out of batteries induction. So there's a Chinese company called Neo and they have two and a half thousand garages in China and about eight now in Norway, where you go in, you drive your car and it swaps the battery out in six minutes. And it's a subscription model, so China's been doing this for years, Norway likes the idea. And then there's a company in Massachusetts in America, they are doing induction. So they've got roads and parking lots that you go in and it sucks the electricity into your car like a mobile charger does without a lead. We spoke about Ubertricity and, and on the right, we will see hydrogen and we will see more possible, sorry, fuel cells. Hydrogen is very popular in the Netherlands and Germany, where stations come in thick and fast. But we're slightly behind the curb and we've only got eight refueling stations at the minute. Next slide. Okay, so will it be a cost? So if you go down the Ubertricity route, there'll be no cost, but if you wanted to do your own, there's 75% government funding for this. And if you are a parish council or a social enterprise, you can get some of these chargers, you know, at a good cost. Next slide. But the three quarters of the way down is the important part. Businesses can claim up to £500 for the charging infrastructure per parking space. So that's pretty cool. So what I go into businesses and other councils is, I say, put as many as you can in now, because you'll get the grant, this will be gone in 18 months' time. Our next slide. Okay. So if you guys are ever interested in about charging and where the charges are, if you take a screenshot of this and download the app, it's called ZapMap. So this is the Bible or AA route plan of where all the chargers are in the UK. So the slow ones, the fast ones, the ultrafast ones, it's all free. And it's a really smart app and it shows live if the charge is free as well. Next slide. If you look, here's a stat for you back in May this year, how many charging points are there? So there's nearly 20,000 locations with 32,000 devices. So we've, we're, we're on, we're in a good place, but for mass adoption, we need to 10x this. Next slide. So if you or any of your parish councils or staff need any advice, I create the Greenest Taxi Company in 2018 and I went from solar to storage batteries to the cars, I never, ever went into the grid at all. Next slide. And any questions later on after Jeremy's slideshow?
Great, thank you Leon, that's good, good overview there. Yeah, so we will be just format, yeah, we're gonna be handing out Jeremy now. After we, Jeremy will go to questions and then after that, we're gonna give you, if anyone wants to hang around, give an overview of what we can do at Scribe to help you. In particular, one of our missions is to enable your local councils clerks, anyone working at councils to spend more time engaging their community and less time administering it. So we really wanna free up your time doing all the boring admin, so you can do more exciting things such as applying for grants for electric vehicles. So I'll share, I'll just drop this down here and then I'll get Jeremy's slides up. Yes, and all slides will be shared with you and we'll even write a blog post, which Jessica's working on right now. With the questions in there as well. So Jeremy, over to you sir.
Hello there, can everyone hear you okay?
And also please, everyone, look how smart Jeremy is, he's got the lovely tie shirt there.
I had, I do Leon and John, you see.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not very, yeah, I have to upgrade next time.
Regulation trousers on, but we won't go there. Okay, right, good morning everybody. So my name is Jeremy Burton, I'm the county officer, officer for Norfolk ALC. Probably you can hear from the accent, I'm Norfolk born and bred. Unfortunately, the main person who was going to deliver this or was involved with this aspect of work for Norfolk ALC is a chap called Pete Strange and he's our wellbeing manager. He can't be with us today, I think he's, obviously got booked off for holiday, he's got more sense of himself, but he's, so that's pretty much his area of expertise, but hopefully what I can cover, I'll go through and hopefully as best I can anyway on this. So if you could, next slide please. Okay, okay, so, so basically, if he decides, you should go back, John, sorry. Sorry, okay, so, so basically, what I wanna cover today is the really electric vehicle car charging points from both a parish and town council perspective and also try and look at some of the regulatory and also the financial implications, because being in the clerking world, we love, we love our regulations, so I wanna cover that really. So, and again, what I've actually used as a model and a description is a scheme which is offered by Anglia Car Charging. And this is, this was initially developed in conjunction with Suffolk County Council, so there are, our next county council. And they've actually got 104 installations they've installed so far, so they're quite some way down the route. If you actually look them up, it's Anglia Car Charging, have a look on the web and obviously you can see their site etcetera, and I have got some contact details and email addresses if you want them. Norfolk County Council's actually working up with them as well, as I understand, to get some schemes up and ready. So any, any other schemes do exist, obviously as Leon's gone through some existing, but obviously they need more negotiation, need to nail down costs and issues etcetera with other schemes. Next slide please. So the first thing I just wanna look at really with yourselves is the general power of confidence. And don't, you will love the general power of confidence, so it was introduced by the Localism Act 2011, excuse me, and took effect in February 2012. And in simple terms, it gives the councils the power to do anything an individual can do, provided it's not prohibited by any other legislation. And also to be eligible, basically, what you need to do and to adopt the general power competence is you need to have at least two thirds of your members being elected and the clerk must hold the appropriate qualification, which is normally the SILCA qualification. NALC produced a legal topic note and I imagine most people on there have seen that, that's Legal Topic Note 89, which was, which was issued on the 24th of March 2022. And it is quite specific and it's quite a good document actually, so it actually is sustainable energy, electric vehicle charging points. And, and it goes through there, it actually says what specific powers do local councils have regarding the generation or sale of electricity? And I think that's the whole point of it, as well as the actual sale of electricity. So to cut a long story short really, you can look through, and there's quite a few different acts they've looked through, for example, section 20, the climate change and sustainable and the energy, sorry, Act 2006. So there's different, there's lots of other different acts on there, but it actually sort of goes on to say that the, you cannot actually, so in, in, sorry, in any event, charging electricity would be trading, a local council can only trade if it has a general power competence. So I think that whichever way you look at it, you can actually only charge for electricity if you have the general power competence and NALC seem to be quite, they are quite strict on that. So that's something everybody needs to be aware of. So next slide please. So other four things really to consider as a parish, normal sort of parish and town councils is do you have a suitable location? So again, for the actual parish stroke town council, so I'm yes on there, I hadn't, I hadn't thought of what Leon was talking about with the, with the actual columns etcetera, but generally you'd need a parish hall or, or a village centre, which you have control. And you can have obviously a fixed, where they can be fixed to a building or freestanding on a column. Obviously, you'll need spaces for the vehicles to stand when they're charging. And just remember as well, obviously, some to take into account, they could be there for several hours as well. Another consideration you need to have with this particular scheme is you need to have mobile reception. So the chips that are used in the charging points are used to transmit data, multi-platform, they can have different mobile providers, however, if there's no signal, obviously they, they won't work. So that's something you just need to think about on that side, on that. Next slide please. Electricity supply, again, I'm not an expert in this, but, but obviously there's just several things that you need to think about with electricity supply. The first issue is how much power do you need? I saw a question came in the chat about the three-phase electricity, but so you kind of domestic power supplies can either be single phase or have three phase. And each phase, as I understand it, can support one kilowatt of charge power. And that's something that you need to, so if you don't have three-phase electricity supply, but with domestic supply, you could only have one charging point. Okay. And then just think also that with electricity supply as well, is what you're actually running as well, on, on there as well. So if you've got your demands, things like your ovens and your cookers and so on and so forth, and air conditioning, you just need to be careful for the electricity supply. Next slide please. On installation, on installation, sorry, at the moment currently takes about a day to install and you can have it up to store up to three points. And obviously that could be longer if you need major works. So if you need to upgrade or access a consumer unit or the, you're a long way from the consumer unit or the building. And also if the electricity supply needs to be upgraded or improved, this could add to the time and complication, the installation, if the supply has to be brought in from a long distance away. In general, supply lines can be surface mounted using armor cable, but if they need burying the walls, this would add to the cost and complexity. Next slide please. So maintenance and management. So once these have been installed, they become the property of the parish council or town council, who would need to instigate a programme of supervision to make sure the points remain in safe and usable condition. Norfolk County Council actually are doing something at the moment, they're applying for local electric vehicle infrastructure funding for a range of new points across the county. And participation required that these points are kept in good condition and available for seven years. Regarding, with regard to the maintenance of the actual charging points, either the parish or town council could accept responsibility for the maintenance or they can sign up to a contract with Anglia and that guarantees prompt attention if you have any faults. Next slide please. So that leads us to the question of costs. So assuming the town council owns land or buildings and has complete discretion as to what they're used for, the only cost for the location really is the insurance cost for the charging points, once they've been installed and obviously they need to be included on your asset register as well. If the available electricity supply is adequate, then this will not include any charges. But if a new supply had to be installed, this could cost up to £10,000. The council will also be responsible for the increased use of electricity in the short term. Well, obviously this would be covered by the income from the points. Installation using the Anglia Car Charging Scheme starts approximately 3,000 to 3,500 per point, and this obviously can be honed down on the initial survey. Ongoing each charging point costs £4.50 per month for the SIM card used to transmit the data. And if a maintenance contract is taken out for the points, this costs additional £8 per month per point. Okay, so we've estimated really that total running costs would be less than £5 per year for three points. Next, next slide please. So the benefits, we all love benefits, don't we? So, so basically the benefits really to yourselves and the community really, obviously the, the main things are you've got more charging points for your local residents, you've got increased availability of public charging, increased consumer choice, reduced greenhouse gas emissions, cleaner environment, lower running costs, reduced noise pollution. And then also you've got the potential for income. So under the current model, where users are charged £35 per kilowatt per hour, on average Suffolk, and obviously he was one of the early adapters, are making £5 per use and out of 104 sockets installed, only one is not wiping its face. Each council can charge its own pricing structure to fit local needs and any changes to tariff can be performed via the SIM, although the, the price sticker on the machine needs to be replaced and obviously Anglia can do that. And I just wanna end up on a, on a good news story and just what can be done. So those that know Norfolk really will know there's a small, small Dickelborough, is a small parish in South Norfolk. I looked today, you've got 1,472 residents and, and they basically just recently installed three points installed, using £10,000 from their county stroke district council discretionary funds. And, and that's, they've installed that in the village for all, and I think that's quite a good story and shows what can be done in a, in a small village basically. So thank you, John.
Excellent, thanks Jeremy and Leon, much appreciated.
Excellent. Thanks Jeremy and Leon. Much appreciated. I've certainly learnt a lot. It's amazing all the innovations that are happening right now in the industry. I mean, in the early days with electric vehicles, you know, people were really kind of saying it's never going to happen because of the availability of, you know, petrol stations everywhere. But I always said electricity is literally the most available thing that we have. So it is cool to see all the innovations to get those charging points and actual things happening on the ground. Lots of examples here in Norfolk. So we are going to go over to questions. I really like people to ask the questions or, you know, so feel free to unmute yourself and put on your video. So Victoria Fair, she was the one that asked the first couple of questions. Feel free to come to the stage. You said you had a dark question, but there is no dark question. So.
It was to ask whether there's one charger fits all or whether only one particular thing fits one particular vehicle.
No, that's a really good question because, you know, we've all liked charging our phones. It's a right nightmare, isn't it? And, you know, the EU are now introducing a regulation. It'd be really good that we can all have the same fitting because even iPhones, you know, you get a new one, you need a new charger. So that is definitely not, definitely not a dark question. Who's able to answer that? Leon or John? Leon?
Yeah, you're totally right, Victoria. It's three types of chargers. So like in the old days, we had VHS and Betamax. The Betamax version called Chademo, which Japanese is already kind of obsolete. So we're going with a European American standard called a CCS and a type two. So your type two will be at home and a CCS will fit every single car moving from July to June.
Okay.
Ninety-five percent of carmakers have gone CCS.
Okay, brilliant. Dare I ask which the other five percent are?
So then Nissan's, but they're now retrospectively changing them over. But your box, again, you can, like the charging needs, you have a USB or USB-C, you can change them, they're not fixed.
Okay.
It was very valuable, yeah.
You had a follow-up question as well, didn't you?
I did, but I can't remember what I asked.
It was about, yeah, we'll share it. You were asking about contacts at Shell Ubetricity to ask for lamp posts. Yeah, so we'll get that for you off Leon and then we'll share it in our follow-up email.
Super, that's great. Thank you.
Cool. So we've got S J Redfield James, nice name there. You had a question?
Hi, yes, I did. Our village is quite small. We have no street lighting. We've been looking into this sort of for a while now and are very keen to put it in more for residents than anybody else. But we've come across the problem that we haven't got phase three electricity anywhere nearby. Is there any way around this?
Yeah, I can answer this as well. So there is, so you'd have to, or Ubetricity would look at UK Power Networks. They'll see where your nearest substation is and how viable it is to run a cable to where you want it. What Ubetricity aim is, is to get EV chargers for, like yourselves. And again, there'll be no cost to the parish council. So they're really willing to do it because they see this will be the future. So yeah, it's doable.
Okay, that's great. Brilliant. Thank you.
The next was Mr Ring, Chris Ring.
Morning, thank you. We're just in the process of trying to get some quotes to put some lighting in our parish hall and parish field car park. And it was interesting to see the charging points on being retrofitted to lampposts. Would it be worth me hanging on and getting posts that actually include this in it? Or should I sort of proceed and then get retrofitted?
Well, personally, I'm one of these people that you do as much as you can for your funding now. So start, start the ball rolling and then add it when, if, you know, if you haven't got the money now or there's grants. It's sources for courses, Chris, really. But I would start now. Go for it and add the stuff later.
I was just thinking about the cost, would it be cheaper just to hang on a little bit with the lampposts? And get them as a combined or, or, I was just trying to balance the cost because I'm still a way away from doing that, to be honest.
Okay, well, reach out, you know, I say I can through Scribe, I can game and contract with a couple of people who are doing this. And they'll come with some really smart quotes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Julie, good question. Often comes up. Do you want to ask it? Julie Lata?
Yeah, I just want to know that, you know, you put in all these charging points, but what stops people from parking up, charging their car and then disappearing off for the day? If it's on unrestricted parking road?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So in London and places like Plymouth and Brighton, they do like more city centre of permits. So there's people looking round. And there's one firm, especially in the UK, that if you're over two hours charging and your battery's full, then you financially get quite impacted quite a lot on the app. But there's nothing physically you can do from a car parking in that space. It's like a car parking W all night unless it's well kind of monitored by the parish council and wardens. There's, it's a real tricky one, Julia.
Yes, I mean, I guess the only tactic is the financial penalties. You just make it. I mean, that can actually be a great revenue generator as well, potentially. But it's also, you know, can be an inconvenience, particularly if you're commuting in and then you've got to park up and then you've got to leave work and go and move your vehicle. But yeah, I think generally it is financial penalties, isn't it?
I think my issue is that because we're in a holiday destination, that people would see it as a free parking space effectively. And they would go off for the day so that, you know, then nobody else can use it. But other holiday makers would want to come in and use it. They couldn't, residents couldn't use it. So I think it's kind, it could be quite a divisive thing to put in.
Yeah. But I guess it's also, I get, I mean, my two pence, it's also a good problem to have. You know, so if you've got that demand for people wanting charge, I mean, I guess they might be using it for other purposes. But, you know, when you have that problem, you look at solutions for it. But yeah, it's a good point. Yeah.
On that, Cambridge County Council have acted very swiftly. So within months, they had wardens seven days a week and their income was more than any other car park. So financially, they really made a lot of money. And then the word got around and people stopped parking there.
But these are unrestricted roads, you see. There's no, you can park there all the time free of charge. So we wouldn't be able, we can't do any parking enforcement there.
It'd have to be the charging, you know, so you have to pay for charging. So it'd have to be financial penalties after a certain threshold of time. It just gets so expensive that, you know, you're forced to move your car. Or if you're rich enough and can afford it, well, you would do it and you'd pay a lot of money. But then, you know, there'll be, you know, you would generate more income from it.
Liam, which company was it that charged you the extra when you go over your overcharged time?
So all of them, basically. Every single one of them, yeah. Instaboot, Tesla, Genie Point. So yeah, and they'll just kick you off as well. The software in both the car and the charger, they'll just kick you out. And there's a huge movement on social media that if you're in that space and you know, you'll, someone will put a post and kind of embarrass people. So.
Yep.
Naming is shaming. Okay, thank you.
That's a good one, naming is shaming. Cool. Okay, Alan.
Yeah, just a quick question regarding the actual, well, connecting cable it is rather than a pipe. But who's actually responsible for providing that? And I understand that they're becoming quite desirable to theft. Now, I have a relative who was actually using the Kensington one, I believe, and had his cables stolen. And obviously then ended up with, I believe, is it about £500 with the replacement?
Jeremy, do you want to answer this one?
That's not my expertise.
Right. So yeah, there's, so you're right, Alan, this is started to happen in America especially. And the only thing you could do really is have CCTV and just hope, you know, one, they don't get electric shock. Because this is serious voltage up to somewhere up to 6.6 kV, you know. And yeah, hope it's in a well light area and thieves tend to look at something else. It's a real tricky one.
So the individual is responsible for the cable then, rather than the council or the provider then, yeah.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, Michelle, you've been patiently waiting there. Do you want to unmute yourself?
I just wanted to check with Jeremy that I heard what you said in the beginning, that Legal Topic Note 89 has got about the power of competency in the councils for charging for electricity.
Yeah.
So all the information is in there in that.
Yes, yeah. I've been looking at, point number four is quite explicit really. So, but yeah, if you get Legal Topic Note 89, you can get it on our website or the NALC website. But it's a document, yes, it's very good, it's quite explicit really. So albeit full page of legal speak, but to me, it's quite black, it's black and white.
Thank you.
Good stuff. Alan, Mr Barker. Oh, no, 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 sorry. I've already done you, Ian.
I want to say something slightly anti some of the things that happened, but I should introduce this by saying, I'm Chair of Parish Council at Houghton-on-the-Hill in Leicestershire. I have an electric car. I've run it for 18 months. It's the best thing since sliced bread. And I'm involved with trying to set up an EV car club based in our village. So that's positive. However, some of the information that Leon was providing, I thought was a bit over optimistic. My car's got 60 kilowatt hour battery. And actually, to charge it up even on my seven kilowatt charger on my house, it actually takes around about 12 hours to fully charge from flat. Okay. Not six hours, which was on Leon's stuff.
So you just stipulated, what was the size of your car, Ian? 60 kilowatt?
It's a 62. It's a Kia E Nero.
So the majority of cars in the UK at the minute are 39 kilowatts.
Yeah, but that's a transient. My daughter has a Nissan Leaf, which comes down into that category. But you actually said 60 kilowatts in six hours on your slide.
Maybe I got my figure wrong, that's my bad. But majority will be five, six hours.
So it actually, I mean, I charge on Economy 7 overnight and in seven hours with Economy 7 on a seven amp, seven kilowatt charger, it charges me from 20% to 80% of battery capacity, which is brilliant. It's not a problem.
All right.
However, this gets me back to the real question, which is about the lamppost charging. What is the maximum power, the maximum current capacity of the lampposts? Because your implication on your Westminster example, if you string together a whole series of adjacent lampposts and try and draw six or seven kilowatts out of them, the whole system's going to fall flat. Just like some of the charging points you go to, if you, they may be rated as seven kilowatts or 22 kilowatts or whatever. But if you plug two cars in, the charge is split between, the available power is split between the cars. So it ends up you get less current than if you're plugged into a 13 amp socket.
You're right on the lot of that, Ian. So the majority of them will draw 3.6 kilowatt to five and it'll be around 16 amps. So I don't know the full data. Obviously, I'm just explaining how Ubetricity works. I can get the data for you with Adam, their CTO, Chief Technological Officer. And, you know, he'd be keen to speak to you if you're looking for something like a guy yourself in Leicestershire.
Cool.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not trying to do anybody down. It's just that if you raise expectations too high,
Yeah.
disappointment later is bad news.
You know, they've got 5,200 charge points and there's been a very good success rate. So Shell are a big company, they know what they're doing. And like anything though, if there's something wrong and it's not quite right, I will, I'll investigate and I'll personally come back to you, Ian, and I'll get your email from John.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thanks, Ian. Good technical questions there. So Joe Bennett.
Let me unmute myself. Okay, I forgot what my question was, but scroll down.
Maintain maintenance?
Oh, yeah, we were just wondering, because we're having some fitted in, but we haven't really been involved with the contracts. So we were just wondering here, can the EV points be maintained by general electrician or a specialist electrician in EV points? Or is the maintenance built into the purchase?
So there's a couple of options, but any electrician that's 18th edition qualified, it's literally like pat testing. You put a thing in, you select it, you'll get three greens. If it's got an earth fault, it'll show a red etcetera. It's very, very simple.
Great. Perfect. Thank you.
Great. Simon?
Can you hear me? Because I sometimes have problems with the mic.
Perfect.
The GPC, power competence, I'm guessing that in Norfolk, probably half the councils at least don't have it.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's more than that, Simon.
Yeah, I was thinking it would be probably nearer 75%. We've got elections coming up next year. We all know that the elections are going to happen. And in West Norfolk, 90% were uncontested. So even if your clerk is Sylker qualified, you'll probably end up with a council that isn't or won't allow it to be, get GPC. So that's going to be a major hurdle. And to my mind, this whole thing is a nonsense unless the government actually makes the decision that we have a power to do it. In the cases of the parish councils that I work for, I don't have Sylker, but I'm not intending to get it on my retirement. I can't be asked frankly. The councils are likely to be mainly elected, so they could get it in that thing. It shouldn't rely on whether the clerk has a particular qualification, whether the people in an area get access to this. The second part is that since we don't have it, we can't use section 137 because the cost would be too much. It would exceed the section 137. So if we don't own the village halls, we can't. It simply seems to me to be impossible to do it. There was another question about car parking on the street. Oh, great, we'll get lots of money. No, we won't. Our residents will lose the parking spaces because the charging is there. But the money that's made will go to the companies. So we invest if we can. I don't believe we can. Money in parking spaces and charging at cost to the residents. The residents lose out because Brancaster's absolutely teeming with visitors like Julia's place. And we're actually being put off from doing this, but the government wants us to do it. It seems to be crazy. Any thoughts?
Yeah, good questions on the business model there. Leon, I mean, yeah, in terms of the funding, is it possible, you know, any of the arrangements like with Ubetricity, that the actual, you know, organisations that are kind of owning the infrastructure can receive income?
Yeah, so there's a very forward-thinking company called Instaboot and they're tied in with booths, McDonald's, Starbucks, some parish councils in the west of England. And they just take two to four spaces of your car park. They then have the freehold, but they give you 50% of the money they make.
But is that allowed? Because I thought we couldn't make money from something that we don't have the power to do? Or is it just a straight donation?
It can work either way. I think Jeremy might know a bit more.
You can trade basically the general power competence. So you can make money.
But if you don't have, this is what I'm saying.
Oh, if you don't have, you can't do it, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is NALC trying to do anything about that? Because, I mean, 75% of us say, are sitting here thinking this would be absolutely brilliant. We want to do it. Our residents want us to do it, but we're not allowed to legally.
Yeah, there's two.
That won't wash.
No, no. There's two things really. I think when I say we, I mean Norfolk and also now the National Association are working hard to try and make more people stand for elections next year so to we get more contested elections. So that's a big thing. And I take your point about the lobbying of government really to try and get some more councils so that we can actually do this without general power competence. Yes.
So that we can actually do this without general power competence. Yes, that makes sense.
The other thing at the moment is if what happens, if you lose power competence, does that, okay. Anyway, I'll shut up.
So we're going to do one more question. I'm going to, and then other questions that are not answered, we have some there. We will, if you don't mind, Leon, Jeremy, we'll send them to you and then you could write them responses and we'll include it in our blog. Going to go to Patricia's had her hand up. Patricia.
Oh, hello. Yes, probably following a little bit from Simon's thing. Because at the annual parish meeting, somebody asked about having electric vehicle charging points because it's very rural communities. But, well, most people here would be driving tractors and pickups, but you're getting people coming into the area. So how how is a parish council that doesn't have power competence, a precept of four and a half thousand pounds, doesn't own any buildings? How are we going to advise the local community about how you, particularly for when people come to the area? So that they don't suffer from range anxiety? Because as as you've been talking about, probably quite built up areas and we're very much in the west country. So how can I advise them about how how to how to move forwards and do things for them?
Don't be too advanced there.
Someone can.
Go for it, go for it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, no, I I think I think that to a degree, I think where there's a will, there's a way. And I think that it's it's trying to work with with other, you know, with other community organizations. You know, you might have a village hall committee or you might have some other committee or someone else might be able to to provide it really. I think there is, there is absolutely loads of funding out and I think it's actually just looking at at how it can be. The the main problem with the actual town, with the parish and town councils, the actual charging, the actual charging of it. But you can still install them and so on and so forth. It's trying to work out how you can work around that issue regarding the charging. But I I don't see there's an issue if another, like a village hall organization or some other organization you work with doesn't do the, you know, doesn't do the charging.
Okay. And also, also, well, I mean, going back to Leon there, so if you haven't got a mobile phone signal. You you can't install these things, is that correct?
You you can, but they they'll probably have a hard wire. So going back to a hard wire phone line to it.
Right.
It's all doable. So Norway's the classic. Norway's very sparse in the north. And they've got what you call mini solar and storage systems. So they store the energy in the day. You still get sun in the day and they'll utilize that and give some small, if you're absolute desperate, electrons to your car.
Right, okay.
Great. Awesome. Thank you, everybody. So we all really have to show our appreciation to Leon and Jeremy. What should we do? Shall we wave? Put your hand up. Thank you very much, Leon and Jeremy. Really appreciate it. We've all learned a lot about that. So just to kind of recap.